Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Keho Kaloli Shower and I'm the Chair of the Board of Regents. I'd like to welcome everyone. The February 6, 2025 Special Meeting of the Washington State Board of Regents is now called to order. This is an exciting moment in our WSU history, and it is also a challenging moment in our WSU history. We are facing changes and implications to our research, to our communities that require thinking that's broad and big and a commitment to our values. And I just want to acknowledge that I recognize how the changes at the federal level are affecting us here at Washington State University and making it challenging for us to continue to meet the goals and objectives that we hold so dear. And I am so proud to be part of this COOG Nation. I believe that we will continue to get through this and to thrive because that's the way that COOG Nation shows up. So I just want to acknowledge that while this is an exciting moment, there is a lot happening outside of this room. And we, as a Board of Regents, are committed to continue to show up and to be here in support of our senior leadership team, our faculty and our students as we navigate this unprecedented moment. I'd like to start with a bit of gratitude and appreciation for each of the members of the Board of Regents. Each of you have been called to serve, and I really do believe that this is a calling. We are volunteers and we show up because we care so deeply about WSU. And so I just want to extend my thanks to each of you. To make today possible has not been an easy or a quick lift, and I'm appreciative. So thank you. I also want to acknowledge my two fellow members of the Executive Committee, Regent Dickinson and Regent Ramos. I cannot put into words the depth of my appreciation for the two of you, from moments of humor to maybe some tears. And that might have been me, but I do want to say I am so grateful to be on this journey with the two of you. I admire you. You inspire me, and I learn from you every day. So thank you for all of the hard work and the hustle to help us get to where we are today. Your partnership is incredibly meaningful to me. I'd like to go ahead and ask our Assistant to the Board to take roll call. Tracy?
Here.
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 Hunter Vogel?
Here.
President?
Thank you, Tracy. We like to welcome our public to address the Board at the beginning of every meeting, and I'd like to go ahead and move forward with that public comment. The time to submit a public comment has already closed for this meeting. If you'd like to submit a comment or to address the Board in the future, we ask that you go ahead and do that through our Assistant to the Board, Tracy Jortle, by submitting an online request at regents.wsu.edu or emailing regents@wsu.edu. The Board will neither discuss nor debate topics that are raised to us by public comments. So I just want to share that there won't be an interaction. Instead, we do want to hear from you, and we will take your thoughts and feedback and appreciate your willingness to be here. So speakers who are in person, I'll announce your name when it is your opportunity to speak. And at this time, we'll ask you to come to the presenter's table. We have one member of the public that has signed up to address the public. So I'd like to go ahead and see if that person is participating. They are participating virtually. Thank you, Tracy. And at this time, I'd like for Nathan to join the Board, and we'd love for you to go ahead and address the Board. I'd like for you to keep your comments around a couple minutes if possible. Thanks, Nathan.
Great. Greetings. Thanks. I'll try and keep it short. I do have something to read here, but I'll go through it. Some of you here today on the Board I have not had the opportunity to address, and so the context of my comments may not be known to you. I'm a former employee of Washington State University. I served the institution for a decade in various roles and in my former office for over five years. I've spoken with the Board before about my experiences of abusive conduct as defined by the BPPM and a lack of desire to investigate concerns I had about the potential unethical application of academic policies to the detriment of a subset of students, which may, and I want to say "may," have disproportionately affected those designated to be in a protected class. Without going into details further, I want to draw your attention to what I see as a problematic aspect of how this matter was handled by university personnel. In voicing these concerns, it was conveyed to me by two supervisors to look to the BPPM and to HRS and its materials for guidance on how to approach seeing my concerns weighed and addressed as needed. In turning to those resources, I was directed by them to additional offices, including Compliance and Civil Rights in the Office of the University Ombuds. My engagement with those outlined processes and with each of those offices, in my experience, came to be a reason for me to later be subject to what I would consider punitive measures. After approaching the Ombuds and extending an offer of mediation to those parties in my office, my access to university systems was cut off the following day, which was a Friday. After not receiving any communication from anyone about how to proceed with work the next Monday, I resigned effective immediately the day after that on Tuesday, September 9. I was not comfortable serving in a role in a public institution and collecting money while being unable to work or conduct my duties without access to university systems. Despite having verbal agreements with those supervisors, did I would still receive recommendations from them even though I had continued to engage with different offices on campus to express my ongoing concerns? After I resigned, that ceased to be the case. In addition, those in my office cut ties with me on LinkedIn in coordination at one time. As you may or may not know, because of the rising importance of platforms like LinkedIn for any job search, the effect of that shunning is to further harm my ability to secure work elsewhere. I know that the university denies these are punitive measures, but I will say that they look and feel punitive to me. Since that time, I've gone through numerous application processes where I get through the interview, but I get dropped at that last stage when employers typically reach out for reference checks. Many applications no longer ask you to provide references and instead reach out to your former office themselves. If this occurred once or twice, I could see how it could be bad luck, my lack of ability, my lack of fit. However, this has happened so consistently, while I've also been given compliments throughout these processes, that it no longer feels like a coincidence. This has had serious implications for me and what I'm doing, and I thought that I was doing the correct and ethical thing in my engagement with WSU. I would hope to get some assurances from the Board that others will not have the same experience I had for raising concerns about similar issues in the future. What is an employee supposed to do to have their concerns taken seriously and investigated if not follow the process that's outlined online and told to you to do? Mine did not seem to be taken seriously or investigated. Others there are still aware of what happened, and the outcome for me communicates to those others that they themselves are not free to voice their own concerns if they do arise in the future. I see that as a problem that needs to be addressed. I want to believe that you also see that as a problem that needs to be addressed. No organization can foster that sort of environment and hope to retain well-qualified and ethical employees. That's the end of my comment. I will just say, if anyone wants to reach out to me to discuss this further, you can reach me at 509-731-3053. Thanks.
Thank you, Nathan. I'm going to transition the Board into a discussion and action on presidential contracts. On December 4, 2024, the Regents met in executive session to evaluate the qualifications of applicants for public employment. On January 13 through the 15, the Regents met in executive session to interview finalists for the position of Washington State University's 12th President. On January 24, following robust discussion and open sessions, the Regents delegated authority to me as Chair of the Board of Regents to extend an offer of employment and to negotiate a contract with Candidate B. I'm delighted and honored to announce today that we have been successful in negotiating terms with Candidate B. Before I speak to the contract, I want to pause, and I want to recognize President Schultz. His inspirational leadership at WSU for the past nine years has had an impact and a legacy seen on every campus at WSU. As President, he has successfully funded and launched the Elson S. Floyd College of Medicine. He's seen record levels of philanthropic support for faculty, staff, and students. He's rebuilding PAC 12 and has hired a talented team of leaders. His leadership has been meaningful, and I'm eager to celebrate him throughout this transition. President Schultz and First Lady Noel Schultz have given with passion and generosity, and I am grateful. We want to thank President Schultz for his dedication to WSU and for being a supportive partner as we've sought to find WSU's next president. President Schultz continues to place WSU's needs at the forefront of our planning efforts. With over 18 months to work with the Board on this transition, we've wanted to ensure that the new president is involved as soon as possible, and we're all working together to have a transition that is as seamless as possible. Given the current state of the higher education environment with highly volatile yet calls for long-term planning, President Schultz and the Board have mutually agreed that it is in everyone's best interest to accelerate the timeline for transitioning to a new president. President Schultz's knowledge and expertise is invaluable. It is needed in this moment, and we want him ready and available to assist the next president in the transition. Therefore, beginning on April 1, the new president will take office, and President Schultz will continue to work with our senior leadership team and the new president as a senior advisor to the president. Now returning back to the contract of WSU's next president. The negotiated contract includes the following terms and expectations. A term effective April 1, 2025 through June 30, 2030 with a possible extension. An agreement to always perform faithfully and to the best of their ability, experience, and talents. All the duties associated with service as a president of a public land-grant, research-intensive university, including centering WSU's system, land-grant mission, our values, and our beliefs in all of our work together. Collaborating with the Board to set the strategic direction of the WSU system. Advancing excellence in research, education, and extension. Enchampioning and enhancing WSU's reputation and rankings. Promoting student success by leading initiatives to enhance enrollment, increase retention, and support students in achieving their academic and career goals. Stewarding and increasing WSU's financial resources. Supporting and promoting Cougar athletics. We've been listening to our WSU community, and for the thousand that showed up to provide us input in developing that leadership profile, we've taken the essential elements of that leadership profile and we have inserted it into the contract as essential duties. Your input has directly led to what we're planning to do today, which is hire a president that reflects the interests and the needs of WSU moving forward. The annual base salary will be $735,000 with annual evaluations completed by the Board. The Board has already begun drafting key performance indicators that we will work with our president-elect to develop their one-year goals that we can prioritize and measure, linking these goals to our strategic imperatives. To note, a provision included in this contract states that as part of a WSU-wide budget reduction, there may be unpaid furlough for a maximum of 60 days per fiscal year. The president will live in the Idalou Anderson House on the WSU Pullman Campus through December 31, 2025, after which time the president and Board will assess the location of the WSU System Office and Residence. Following completion of the appropriate tenure granting process as outlined in the Faculty Manual, the president will receive tenure and hold the rank of full professor in the Department of Mechanical and Materials Engineering in the Voiland College of Engineering and Architecture. I know the Regents have all had a chance to review the proposed contract prior to the meeting. Would the Regents like any additional discussion before a motion is made? Regent Wright?
Would this be the appropriate time for me to ask a question that you and I have pre-discussed, not privately, but I'm not quite sure of the timing? Can you guide me?
Yes, this would be the right time.
Okay. I have a question, and it's under Section B for discussion, under Salary for B, Incentive Compensation. It's a technical interpretation question. And in order to trigger the incentive compensation, it says that the president will meet or exceed the goals. And I'm just wondering about that word "meets." In my mind, I'm thinking "meets" means that's part of the base comp and part of daily duties and responsibilities. I'm all for incentive compensation. I think it's a great motivator. I'm just wondering about that one word "meets" and/or exceeds. I'll stop there.
Thanks, Regent Wright. Any other feedback or comments based on what Regent Wright just shared? Okay, I can address from my perspective. What we're interested in doing is similar to what we've done with President Schultz, is getting clear on what the measurements of success are. And I think it'll be important that with our president-elect, to be clear on the "meets" is the duties that are listed in the contract, and the "exceeds" will be part of that, KPIs and the goals and objectives that we together move forward with and prioritize. But I'm open to others, and if there's a recommendation relative to this.
Thank you.
Any other feedback, comments, questions?
I could just make a comment. I know that there's been a tremendous amount of thoughtful work that has been put into this contract in terms of clear expectations in detail. And so I just appreciate the level of effort to clarify what we need in our leader to move forward, and I appreciate all of your work to do that. Thank you.
Regent Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I assume that "meets" or "exceeds," it's still up to the Board to determine if there is any change made. It's not an automatic occurrence.
What has typically happened with the Board is we do the annual evaluation before the incentive compensation is awarded. So yes. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay. I'd like to add that in accordance with RCW 28B, period 30, period 100, the faculty and student Regents have not been able to participate or will they be able to vote on matters related to the hiring, discipline, or tenure of specific faculty members and therefore will not participate in this discussion or vote. I'd also like to state for the record that throughout this entire process, the Board of Regents has been in compliance with this directive. Discussion has been challenging without their perspective, yet we have really appreciated having them present in the interviews and present here today. If the Regents feel there's been adequate discussion, I'd ask for a motion that the Regents formally appoint Candidate B as the 12th President of Washington State University effective April 1, 2025, and approve the proposed employment contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Motion is passed. I move that the Regents approve the proposed restated employment agreement between the Board of Regents of Washington State University and Kirk H. Schultz, President, with the amended appointment to conclude on March 31, 2025. Is there a second? Thank you, Regent Hunt. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Regent Pika. And Regent Powell, want to make sure I'm not moving too quickly and that you're both able to participate.
Thank you.
All right. Motion passes. I am honored and excited to introduce our next president, the 12th President of Washington State University, Dr. Elizabeth Cantwell.
You're one of the best parts. I will officially adjourn the Board of Regents meeting, and I'm excited to welcome our new president. I'd like to say a couple words, and then I know that we have a lot of folks here that are excited and interested in meeting our new president, perhaps some media that'd like a conversation with our new president. I'd like to tell you a little bit about our new president. She will be the first woman to hold the position in the university in a 135-year history. I'm particularly excited to share this announcement as one of three women on the Executive Committee at Washington State University at the Board of Regents level. Dr. Cantwell comes to Washington State University from Utah State University, where she has successfully led a $1.3 billion annual operating budget spanning across the state of Utah with 30 campuses system-wide. As president, she has had significant achievements, including a record-breaking $495 million in sponsored research expenditures, 10% increase in student scholarship funding, and the expansion of physical infrastructure with the groundbreaking of new education buildings and facilities, not to mention strengthened academic partnerships with industry leaders and a reorganization of the academic enterprise. Beyond her academic accomplishments, Dr. Cantwell has demonstrated strong leadership and intercollegiate athletics. She has successfully navigated the complex landscape of modern college sports and engaged in the revitalization of the PAC 12 Conference. Prior to her role at Utah State University, Dr. Cantwell has held several leadership positions in research and innovation at the University of Arizona and Arizona State University. At the University of Arizona, she oversaw a research portfolio exceeding $825 million annually. During her tenure at Arizona State University, she spearheaded the impressive growth of research enterprise, including increasing annual research expenditures from $435 million to $680 million in just three years. Dr. Cantwell's career also includes extensive service to the U.S. national security. She held leadership roles at Lawrence Livermore National Laboratory and at Oak Ridge and Los Alamos National Laboratories. Her work advanced critical missions in energy, defense, and space exploration, collaborating with key federal agencies such as the Department of Energy, the Department of Defense, NASA, and the National Nuclear Security Administration. Dr. Cantwell holds an MBA from the University of Pennsylvania's Wharton School, a doctorate in mechanical engineering from the University of California, Berkeley, and a bachelor's degree in human behavior from the University of Chicago. We are thrilled to have Dr. Cantwell here with us, and we cannot wait to welcome her to the WSU community. So with that, I'd like to introduce Dr. Cantwell, and I'd like to give her a round of applause.
Thank you, Chair Shower. No matter how long you do this, it's always weird to hear a long bio of yourself before you introduce yourself to a bunch of people that you're not familiar with. I am absolutely thrilled to be here, and I'm humbled and I am honored because I understand what it is we are stepping up to achieve together. This is a pretty incredible moment for the university, but it's also a little bit personal for me. I've worked with faculty at WSU over the many years. I've published with people here. I've worked with your current president and other administrative members, but I also have a child who's a... she's not a child anymore, by the way, but she is a graduate student here, has been here for about three years. I have visited her many, many times on this campus. We have walked just about everywhere you can in the town of Pullman. And the opportunity to serve WSU as president is actually, for me, a dream come true. So thank you all, and thank you to the Regents particularly, and everybody who participated in this process. I take you seriously, and I thank you for the opportunity. Let's see, I want to talk about the dedication that I see here. It is palpable. The... and I just covered my mic, I'm sorry, but that was my heart. It is really, really noticeable that your dedication as a community across all of the members of this community is... you can feel it when you come here. I want to express my incredible appreciation to President Kirk Schultz. I've known Dr. Schultz for a long time. He has been an advisor to me in many areas. His leadership has been incredible here. He's built an awesome foundation for me to step up to and move you forward with, so I am deeply grateful to Dr. Schultz. Let me say a couple things about this moment. It is an incredible moment to be a COOG. It is absolutely an important moment in the way that we bring ourselves to the table for the benefit of our students who are going to be the leaders in the next... your favorite, but let's call it 10 years, when we are sending them into a fraught and challenging moment in American history. The future needs Washington State University. It needs our students. It needs us to deliver them into that moment, and I'm really confident, based on what I've seen here and what I have been introduced to, that we are ready for that moment. We are living in this incredibly pivotal moment, as I said. We face challenges. I believe Chair Shower alluded to those earlier, but we also have unprecedented opportunities, and I am really confident that together we can create not just a successful institution, but one that demonstrates how we meet the moment and how we grab opportunities and how we deliver them for the people of Washington and indeed for the nation. So this place has so much pride. It is so obvious. It is something that you can feel the minute you come here. I am moved that you found the faith in me, and I will deliver everything that I can. There is an amazing amount of innovation here in passion and excellence that defines this community, so my goal is to build on that legacy. We will harness the land-grant mission. We will define what it means to be a modern land grant. We will do that together, how to use the talent and expertise of our students and our faculty and staff to create even greater opportunities. That's what we're going to do. I'm committed to working with all of you. I'd like to just give you, in this moment, the idea that I do value transparency incredibly, and that means every aspect of our community and our ability to communicate with one another. I'm very eager to actually meet all of you. There are so many people that I would like to spend a one-on-one moment with, so bear with me. I don't start until April 1, and once I start, I will be rockets on, and we will meet. So together, we will shape- So, together, we will shape the future of this institution, and it will be our Washington State University, and we will, in fact, deliver the future for our students and for our state. So, thank you again for the warm welcome and the vote of confidence, and go Cougs!
I want to thank everyone for being here today. This is an exciting moment, and I hope that you are as excited as I am to spend a little time with our president-elect, Dr. Elizabeth Cantwell. Thank you all for being here today. Go Cougs!